We will call this to order. If there's no changes to the agenda by staff or members, we'll have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, perfect. Minutes from July 25th, they were in the packet. We have a motion to approve.
So both move.
We have a second.
Second.
Matt, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jill, for doing those. We'll go to Clara for the first public hearing, which is a conditional use permit for a digital sign in B2 at the Dairy Queen location.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay. Yes, so we have received an application and an accompanying sign permit, which does not matter for this discussion, but just so you know, it has come in, for a CUP for an electronic messaging center at the Dairy Queen location, which is located at 719 East Vernon Avenue. So essentially, the business owner also owns at least one other Dairy Queen in the Lakes area, and they have replaced their sign data with an electronic messaging center and have received good feedback from the community, would like to do the same thing here in Fergus Falls. So they are located in a B2 zone, but that B2 zone abuts a residential zone, and so they are within 400 feet of housing. So they do have to request a CUP per our city ordinance. They are surrounded to the north by I2 General Industrial, and then to the southeast and west by R212 Family. Directly across the street from them is a large park. But again, since it is within 400 feet, they do have to get a conditional use permit. So here you can see the zoning map. They are located in, again, the B2. The yellow next to them there, which is kind of the subject of why we're doing the CUP, this within 400 feet is the R1 zone. Just for some context for you, they are right next to another fast food location, some other businesses, like I mentioned before. There is industrial business behind them, and then across the street, across Concord, is where the housing is. And I think it's worth noting that where their sign is currently, so I'm just going to walk over and point to it on the map. This is where their sign is located. It is pointing onto Vernon. It is not level with the houses. I just think that's important to note. So just some further context, again, there's the sign. You can see the direction that it is pointing is not directly toward housing. So the recommended action for this request is to approve the CUP with the same conditions that we have approved other CUPs for signs, for electronic message centers, just the same conditions that we've used before. So they must abide by all local and state laws regarding the signage, and signage is to be used for onsite advertising only. And then, just as a note, the applicant will still go through a sign permitting process to make sure that, once the sign is being put in, that the footings, et cetera, are all appropriate, that it is hung appropriately. So that is the presentation.
Do we have any questions for Clara?
Is there anything to say that they couldn't switch the location of that sign once we approved it?
For the CUP, no. There is nothing to say that they could not change the location, since it would be allowable per the CUP anywhere on that property. So they couldn't put it on a different piece of property, they'd need to come back and ask for it, but the property that they do own, it could move locations, yes.
But once they permitted, it would have to go in that location for the permit?
Once it's permitted, yep, it would have to be exactly where they said it was going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And their intent is to put it in the same place, is how I read it?
Yep, exactly. So the application itself included the sign permit, and it is, so if you look...
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
That's how I read it. I missed.
Yeah, the little message, so what is now kind of just like a static message board, where you pull in the letters and replace them, that's where they're going to put the electronic one. So they'll just remove that, leave the large pylon as it is now, and put on the electronic one.
I would sure think we can word our motion to...
I don't think we need to, based upon what they have said.
Especially when you have the sign permit application already.
Yep, and I did include it in the packet just for interest.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Clara?
Good question.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one that would like to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for action.
I think motion to approve with the conditions in staff's recommendation.
Second.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, perfect. Then we will move on to our second public hearing, which is a variance to build in addition, not meeting the required front yard setback at 724 Spruce Street. Clara?
Yes, so Mr. Lee Lott came in to talk about his property. He would like to replace what is the current entrance with a porch that would span the front of the building. So Mr. Lott is located at 724 Spruce Street, which is zoned R212 Family Residence District. The zones surrounding him are all R212 Family District, but of interest is that there's an R3 located not far away, which is one of only, I believe, like two of those districts in the city. So it's just interesting to note that location. Directly across the street from him is McKinley School, but otherwise surrounding him are all residences. So the dwelling right now is 35 feet away from the property line. R2 district requires a minimum setback of 30 feet from the property. He is proposing to build an eight-foot-deep attached porch. The addition would run the length, as I said, the length of the house, which would put the porch into three feet of the required setback. So of note is in this area, this area was plotted and the buildings built before our zoning code in 1965, so there were no standards like we would see now. So when you do look at a map of the area, there are differences in where the houses are on their lots, how far away they are from the setback lines, et cetera. So it's not out of character with the neighborhood to consider placing something into that setback, but it is against our zoning code as it is now. So here is, this is a context map. I'll just point out maybe one or two properties that I think are out of compliance with our zoning right now, just to give you kind of an idea of what we see in the neighborhood, maybe the character of the neighborhood. I'll just walk over to the map here. It's a little difficult to see here with the trees, but if you look at this map on our GIS, this house, it has its own porch in the front, which is also into the setback area. I am not sure if that was permitted at some point, why that happened, but that is the case. If you go across to this block here, this home is actually into the setback area from both sides of the street. So it's just, you know, before 1965, things were just done a little differently.
And sometimes after. And sometimes after.
And sometimes after, yeah. So again, here's our zoning map, here's our R1 and R3 that we see. So I did run through all of the conditions, et cetera, or the tests that you run through to see if it should be an allowed action to take. It was like 50/50 that he met the requirements or didn't meet the requirements. In the end, because the property owner proposes to use the property, oh hello, he's here right now, in a reasonable manner, and because the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, I do recommend approval without conditions of the variance request at 724 Spruce Street for, in addition, not meeting the required front yard setbacks.
Perfect.
Hi.
Welcome.
What's about yours right now?
Yeah, I thought it was at 5:30, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're okay.
Do we have any questions for Clara? Or did you have anything else you wanted to add, or did I cut you off?
Well, I did, so I did not receive any comments from the community. We did do our mailing, sent it all out. I did receive one staff comment, and that was simply from our code enforcement officer, who says that she has had some communications with the homeowner in the past about the siding of the house. So from my perspective, I think allowing a change to the front of the house might actually bring us closer into compliance with some of the things that our code enforcement officer has noticed before, so.
May I ask you?
When we open the public hearing, we will be more than happy to have you talk.
Yep, so that is...
So we'll get you up here on that.
I got, sorry, I said, full of final siding.
Perfect, so we will get it dealt with.
So it's all part of the project?
So I'll conclude my part, and then we can do the, yeah, any other questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, so this variance would apply to the construction of this porch. If the porch were to collapse next year and need to be rebuilt, the applicant would have to apply again for another variance, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay. We will open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak about the project, please step forward, state your name and your address for the record.
I don't know, I think you did a very good job.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and bring it back here for discussion or action.
I would add one thing if I may.
We will allow that, that's just fine.
Part of it is location and the way these properties are situated there.
Can I have you step up to the mic, please, just so we have it recorded? Thank you. Sorry.
They knocked off the hill when they built that subdivision, they knocked that hill down, which is part of First Avenue, or, yeah, First Avenue. And due to the lay of the land there, you get a phenomenal wind drift, and the porch is going to be part of, and we have a two-foot retaining wall along the property to a driveway in part, and the porch is part of redirecting the drifting of snow and everything else, so it's not knee-deep in the driveway every time the wind blows a little bit.
Makes sense.
So that's part of the porch project.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Sounds good. We'll close that again, and bring it back here if there's action.
Make a motion to approve the variance request with no conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect, that passes. So it'll go to the city council now from here, it's not a final decision from this point, so I would assume it'll be on the next city council meeting?
So September 6th is the next council meeting, and then generally what happens with planning commission decisions is that they'll go on the city council's consent agenda. They'll just see a memo written by me summarizing what this body decided to do, and then they'll just vote on it from the consent agenda. If they have any questions, they'll pull it off, and I'll discuss it at the meeting, but generally that doesn't happen, so you will know for sure by September 6th.
And is that meeting at 5?
5:30. That one is at 5:30, if you do want to come here. Yep, props to favors.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for putting improvements into your home, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I thought I was retired, but that would be quite a moment, I needed to tear out everything on the inside and the outside.
Well, good luck with that.
Stop in any time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to discussion on the edible cannaboid zoning.
Yes, so I didn't prepare any presentation for that, but I wrote my memo that you guys all got to remember. So basically, I think we just have to decide what we want to do, and I've sort of been using Stillwater as a model, because they started this discussion a year ago. They actually imposed a moratorium in 2021 that I think is only just now coming up. So they've been studying this for the past year, and they are tackling it from several different perspectives, so they're discussing what kind of CBD is allowed, which is not part of the discussion that we've had so far. They're discussing where manufacturing and growth can be happening, which we're poised to discuss the manufacturing, I don't know if we've considered the growth option of it, that aspect yet. And they are also discussing, obviously, where in zoning, the sales themselves can happen, and they've restricted some of their sales in their downtown area, like Sarah Duffy mentioned at our last meeting. But I think they've done some good work based on like the medical usage stuff that we haven't really delved into yet as a city here. We don't have any medical distributors, we don't have any that I am aware of on the horizon, but it is possibly something that could be coming. So I think we should follow what they are doing, but part of the discussion I think I want us to have today is how much distinction do we see between CBD products versus medical marijuana products, and do we call out some sort of difference in those? And then, if we're going that direction, do we see a difference between CBD products and CBD products that contain THC? And how do we solve for that? So that's sort of where I am with the research that I've done, and wondering what kind of input you guys have on that.
I think the CBD that includes the THC, and I'm going to screw up all this verbiage, is more of a concern for licensing. I mean, the CBD is going to start being in every, I mean, it's going to be kind of hard, I mean, it's going to end up at service with the market. I mean, at some point, it's everywhere, and this is just going to create a nightmare for the straight CBD that doesn't include the THC, in my mind. But that's just me.
I agree. Yeah, I think it's going to be everywhere.
Yeah. I mean, the other, I guess, I agree with following Stillwater, because I think they've done the most research probably citywide, but I also think they have a different concern with their downtown tourism-wise. I mean, not that we're not a tourist place, but we're a little different than Stillwater. Yep, agree. That's just my thoughts.
My concern would just be to adopt, and I haven't researched what Stillwater's done, but we're not Stillwater, and so if they've got this complicated regime about what's allowed and what types, and I just, if it's legal from a state perspective, our issue is where can you sell it, and maybe the manufacturing and that sort of thing, but I'd just keep it there. I don't know, and I'll screw up the verbiage as well, the farm bill legalized like a bunch of products that are mind-altering, that can be sold anywhere now and are sold here. So, you know, there's the potential for going, and I think, what materials did we get from, was it from the legal Minnesota cities or something, that said, don't just tack this on to your tobacco sales and don't treat it the same way? I didn't see the why there. I kind of don't get why, why not? Don't we just do a background check on the vendor, and that's the level of oversight we need? You know, I don't know. So that's just my concern, is if it's legal from the state, I just wouldn't want to do anything that could be construed by citizens here as we're trying to take it away.
My gut, when I walked in here after reading what you sent out, was match tobacco. I mean, like, that was just, that was my gut feeling, is match tobacco. Maybe that's nuts.
No, and that's the, I mean, that's the direction, when this first got kicked to planning commission from council, that was the thinking then too, was do we just match it to tobacco, and what does that look like if we do do that? Because we do license tobacco, we don't, and currently, like, okay, so let's use a specific example, Emily McEwen's business downtown, she has a tobacco license.
Oh, she does.
Yep, which we're using as some sort of catch-all for the CBD sales.
I mean, the reality is, is that Perks might all of a sudden decide they're going to sell CBD-infused cupcakes. I mean, that's, that's the reality of where the world's going, I think. And so at some point, we're going to create a headache for every business owner that's doing retail, and a backlog of work for the city that is maybe more work than it's worth.
So don't narrow down to CBD with THC, just maybe keep it high-level CBD products overall.
That or just CBD with THC and the cannabis, and not regulate the straight CBD. You know, that's not the mind-altering stuff.
What's the status quo now in terms of CBD, like chocolate or something, sold at OutState?
Or lotion? I mean, like, there's CBD-infused lotions, like...
So that's CBD with no THC. So the addition of THC being allowed as an additive in food items is specifically what this newest legislation has allowed. So, and so that's what, that's what cities are looking at, how do we regulate the fact that now THC can be in edible items? So thus far, I'm not aware of any products other than what is being sold at the new business that is selling edible THC items.
And then, like, how do we handle if there's a food truck that comes to town and they're doing, you know what I mean? Like, this is a pretty broad direction. I don't know, I'm more of the mindset of, we don't want it across the street from schools, but...
Well, as a planning commission, is it our job to essentially put regulation around it, or is our job just to say, oh, whatever regulation you decide, here's where we're going to allow the sale of it to be? So I'd rather us just focus on where do we see it best fit for sale, and that really should be the bulk of our work as a planning commission. I don't think that we're necessarily the appropriate body to create regulation around it for our city.
I don't disagree.
Versus where you can sell it.
I don't disagree with you, I just think that the council sent it back here for both, probably. That's the impression I got from a council member.
I think for both, but I tend to agree that this probably isn't the right body to come up with some sort of like a license for the product. So if you do want a license, that should be a discussion that happens with council or some attorney.
In some respects, there might be a mixed question there, because if we, you know, were to propose like an ordinance or something like that, that could involve that level of detail, then I suppose the council could look at it. But fundamentally, if someone's going to decide that you can't sell a cupcake that gets people high, that's not our decision. I mean, that's a state decision, and, you know, so I agree in that respect. So maybe we can like dip a toe in that water, but again, I think keep it as simple as possible, and proposing a new license is probably overkill.
That's my gut. And I also worry about like picking where we think it should be sold if we don't know what they're considering able to be, you know what I mean? Like, what qualifies? Like, how do we recommend it can be in any non-residential zone if we're not sure if we're, what we're saying? Like, to me, manufacturing belongs in the commercial zones versus...
Or industrial.
Or the industrial, that's right, I mean, the industrial zones versus the business zones. I mean, I don't think manufacturing on Main Street would be my gut.
Maybe, I'm going to pull up, because I think Stillwater laid out some of these distinctions.
I'm just, I'm kind of a smaller government person, so I'm, like, if the state allows it, like you said?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't necessarily have to go down the rabbit trail of, I mean, maybe I get the manufacturing piece and probably the pig portion of it growing, but you just break, essentially break that out and say, retail, manufacturing, production. And allow in these zones with these setbacks from schools, parks, churches, whatever.
And I don't even know if you can do churches, because they're everywhere here.
I'd really just not, I could see it next to a school.
And the school would be my biggest concerns, yeah.
The school would be my biggest. After that, I don't know that I have a preference.
Right. Is tobacco, can you remind us, what is this, is tobacco only away from schools, or are there other things it's away from too?
I don't know. I think...
To me, match whatever tobacco is from schools, if there is something possibly.
I would be surprised if there's something keeping away from churches that...
That would surprise me.
That would make sense to me.
I don't know how they would do that at like Holiday.
I mean, because I have alcohol churches, so I mean, what the heck?
Churches are trying to be allowed, like, churches don't...
Churches can be anywhere.
Well, churches in schools can go anywhere, yeah. So let's go up...
That was Jesus's fault.
Just remember, you're on camera. I think if people want to start a business and this is what they want to sell, we ought to let them sell it.
So to curiosity, why did Emily need to get a tobacco license, or did she just volunteer to, or how did that all come to be?
I'm not totally sure. I just know that that's what, I just know that's what they did. I'm not sure if she's, she may be selling some tobacco items in her shop, and she required it.
Okay.
I'm not so much sure.
Is getting the tobacco license essentially just a background check, or what's actually required to get the license?
Background check, I believe there's a fee involved, and I think that's pretty much it.
And it's a background check to see if there's, like, what are, if someone has a felony, they shouldn't sell mari, I mean, they shouldn't sell nicotine? Is that the theory behind the background check? I mean, it just seems kind of like, what are we looking for?
Cannot answer that, no. I've never been part of a tobacco licensing process.
It seems like a lot of this is just tradition that gets passed down.
Like, I even question, like, is the background check necessary? I guess, I guess to find, if you find out you're dealing with a drug dealer, then maybe we don't want to be doing this. I guess maybe that's the purpose.
Well, if there's some federal or state thing out there that says felons can't be in possession of the substance, then that's not something we need to necessarily cover, but...
Right. So I guess I even kind of question the background check, to some extent, and the fee.
Once again, is that, is it our place to determine that? I would say no.
Yeah, that kind of comes from the state, I would say.
Well, or the city council should ultimately decide what type of regulations they want to have on here. I think as a planning commission, our job is to determine, hey, this is the appropriate place, not necessarily the regulations.
I agree with that, except again, I think there's a little bit of a mix that we have to contend with, because if we're deciding, you know, again, if you separate out products that can get a person high that are sold legally now today versus what's new as of July, I think you get into the licensing question. And we can just make a suggestion or shirk the issue and let the council, you know, but we at least have to be thinking about it, I think. It seems like there's a consensus here that we lean towards open and less encumbered, at least as a proposal to the council, and for the, you know, for the council to make the call.
Did you get a sense from the council as to where they were leaning when this discussion came up?
Yeah, they were leaning toward treat it like tobacco. And I think, they were leaning, yeah, leaning toward treat it like tobacco, and think about where manufacturing, whatever that looks like, which I'm not totally clear on the definition of what that means, because I think there is the medical side of things, and I think there is the side that is for the edible components. That's why I feel like this is a large and difficult conversation, is because I think we're trying to tackle a lot of different things, all under this one heading of this new legislation, when in reality, there's probably a lot that we should be looking at that goes beyond just what this legislation has now approved.
Okay. So to me, if straight-up marijuana were legalized down the road, that becomes a whole nother discussion that we don't have to tackle yet. Is that how you would take this? Or are you thinking that this is encompassing that too, if that were to happen? Or medical marijuana now?
I could go either way. What my gut tells me is that we should take our time and try to answer as many questions or as many future scenarios as we can with any zoning updates, so that we don't have to keep revisiting this down the line. That said, when the city administrator stopped by my office today, he was like, what do you think's going to happen with CBD? Hopefully something quick, so...
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay. But I don't know, I mean, other communities have the, have had the ability to do a moratorium to say...
There was like no appetite. I watched that meeting, there was none.
No, I do not like that term here.
No.
It did not get us anywhere, so we don't have that luxury. We don't have the luxury of saying, we're trying to figure this out, give us a chance. We just have to come up with something and hope that it's covering what we needed to cover, and that nothing pops up in the meantime.
I guess my gut is to recommend following nicotine.
What would be the potential pitfall if we followed nicotine? What would be the kickback from...
I don't think much.
Other side.
I don't think that that would be an issue. I don't think our code has anything in it about the manufacturing or the creation of...
I guess I should correct it.
That contain nicotine?
Follow nicotine for the sale.
Okay.
That's, I guess that would be where my head is.
Could we leave a application process out there for variances? I mean, if anybody wanted to...
Is there any, I guess that's what I think we're trying to get to the bottom of, is there, where is nicotine excluded from being able to be sold?
Correct, so...
Do you know what I mean? Like, if there's a need, you can always get a, you can always apply for a variance.
Right, because I don't want to put an ironclad, you know, out there, and then all of a sudden, we say, well, yeah, I mean, that looks like a great idea.
But then, like, I think I may have mentioned this last month, like, I read a, I think it was a New York Times or some kind of article that talked about how, like, the, I don't want to say like, kind of like the Tupperware business, there's going to be like home CBD businesses, like, the oils and those kind of companies are going to be getting into that. And so then, like, that's residential parties. How does that, I mean, to me, we can't regulate someone that has, you know, people over for some coffee cake and...
So, spiked coffee. For instance, right now, if you drive past the government center, just to the south, there's that...
Yeah, CBD.
CBD tattoo place and what, a haircut place. There's that place already that's...
And they probably are not tobacco licensed, I would guess they're just doing...
She actually is.
Oh, she is?
They did, again, attach a tobacco license to her CBD sales.
Okay.
Why, I'm not sure.
What about the one on Main Street?
That's Main.
That's the main. The one that just opened, Sugar High or what's that?
I don't know.
No.
Lincoln.
Old Lincoln papers, their tobacco shop, yep. So if they're selling it, it would be, again, attached to a tobacco license.
Okay.
So to the best of your knowledge, every place that currently sells it has a tobacco license?
Yes.
Okay.
That sells it in a form that is maybe not a lotion or that's an edible.
Inhalable. Not just edible, right?
Right, yeah.
Does out, does outstate have?
Yeah.
Does outstate have a?
No.
Okay, so that's.
And they're selling, aren't they?
Yep.
But that's not THC infused CBD.
Right. So I mean, maybe what we do is we say, if it's THC infused CBD or more or greater, you know what I mean, or greater than, basically follow the nicotine.
So basically, I, this passed on like July 5th or something like that, I mean, capture the status quo of July 4th and leave, leave that out of this.
That's my gut, is anything that was new in that legislation.
Okay.
Because I, to me, there's a lot of it already happening that, like, outstate shouldn't have to pay to get a liquor lic, or to pay to get a nicotine license in my mind. I mean, I'm just like them for example.
Yeah.
Well, and if we trace that to the source, the source of that is the chocolate company. Chocolate company is technically the one that's manufacturing with CBD, but not THC.
So to me, then their manufacturing is irrelevant too. You know what I mean? Like if you're not, if you're not manufacturing something with THC or greater than, then you just.
So we are kind of zeroing on THC then, I think is, is.
That's my gut, because the other stuff has all been happening up till now.
Yeah, I think we're responding to a change in the law and the change in the law is the presence of THC.
You guys comfortable with that?
Okay. Okay, I think then what I will do is I will do some draft language.
Unless, can you send an email out, at least to the ones that are here, that if we find out nicotine is very restrictive on where it can be sold, before we take draft language anywhere, I think we need to have some consensus on, to me, schools is the main thing.
Yeah.
But if it's way restrictive beyond schools, I think we need to kind of have that conversation once we know that.
Well, it, I mean, I assume nicotine is no residential.
I would think.
It makes its first appearance in the B3 zone as an allowable use.
Also nicotine can't be in B1 or 2?
According to what I just read, um, it is not, no, it's possible maybe through like a CUP or something, but.
B1 and 2 is downtown, isn't it? Isn't B2 downtown?
Um, downtown is B3.
That is B3. What is B1 and B2?
Um, B2 would be.
Maybe it's just all business or commercial, or commercial districts and we don't.
So B3, for many uses, so that's, so B3 is a lot of downtown, B2.
Because ultimately, if somebody wants the THC, then they can still go to a smoke shop, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
There's gonna be plenty of options for folks, you know?
That inhalants are.
Are a different deal, right.
Are not part of the legislation number passed.
They weren't, just edibles.
And food products.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, I, I just feel that if there is a desire, then somebody can come in, they can apply for a variance. I don't know if I'm reading too far into that or if I'm going down the wrong path.
You need to have, for a variance to meet the conditions, you need to have.
A hardship.
Uh huh. That would be the, that would be your difficulty, is you have to have a proven hardship. And it can't just be the location of the property can't be a proven hardship.
And it can't just be like, it's too expensive to do somewhere else.
Right, right. So that, that's where it becomes harder to do variances and conditional use, you know what I mean? Like, you have to have something that is, I can't put a rampant because there's physically no way to do it on my pro, you know what I mean? Like there has to be a hard, like she said, a hardship. Right, it can't be financially motivated.
But like we use a CUP to sort of regulate, like it's allowable use, but we want to be able to put conditions on it if we need to. So imagine the ordinance update that just happened in like 2019 where we said that warehousing would be allowed in certain business districts, which hadn't been the case before, but it's by CUP only. So applicants have to say, you know, this is why I want to put this business here and then we can do things like require screening or like don't put it in the parking lot, make sure it's inside a building, like you can put conditions on it.
This is just me playing devil's advocate, but the conditional use process, all the neighbors get notified.
Yep.
Licensing, neighbors don't get notified. If we get into this whole conditional use thing or variance situation, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just like, we have to be aware of this, this could become a, I don't want this next door to me kind of thing. And we need to be careful about that too.
Did we say nicotine is only in B3?
That's where it's first allowable, so it would be B3 and then pretty much anything after that.
Because it looks like on the screen there, B2 is, what, restaurants, grocery?
We're gonna have to allow it there. To me, it's business and commercial districts, anything but residential.
I'd just say no, yeah, I would say no residential and whatever school requirement.
How do you guys feel about that? So, are we have a consensus that we are going to say retailing these products with THC or other things that became legal in the July 5th or 6th legislation are allowed in no residential districts and not within whatever the standard footage is from schools? Exactly.
Yeah, I, I, and I would, and I would probably say, I mean, whatever the language is, could we say THC products generally? So if next year they legalize something further, we don't have to do this all over again. We could still, I mean, the council could adjust it.
Right.
If that happens, but.
Right. Okay. Are we of consent? Can we all kind of sleep at night with that?
Yeah, I like the verbiage of products containing THC. Can we get away from the CBD?
Right.
Verbiage, because that can be others as well.
Exactly, it doesn't have to be CBD.
Right.
Yep.
And people should know if they're trying to sell THC.
You'd think.
Know what's in their product.
Before they're using it.
Yeah. Which is part of what the legislation said too, is if you are selling a product that contains some sort of THC, you have to say it on the label and you have to say the amount and it cannot exceed this amount, 23%.
And I think there's so much in one package too.
Yeah. Only 25 milligrams and then each piece can only be up to 25, I think.
Something, I just remember reading the packaging thing. So then for, I guess we should say, let's separate production and growing. Let's talk about production. Production in commercial zones only?
Industrial or?
Right, yeah, industrial, sorry, yeah. I mixed those two up. Unless you have, unless it's conditional use permit in business district and allow a conditional use permit in business districts?
Is there certain health regulations, health code regulations associated with the state, um, legislation that took place?
Um, yes, I believe the Board of Pharmacy is in charge of, like licensing has to take place in such a way that it fits with Board of Pharmacy and with the definition of industrial hemp. So there are Minnesota rules and then state Board of Pharmacy rules that I think govern the actual manufacturing.
Manufacturing food item that bring this ingredient in it considered manufacturing? Like a bakery? Or is it?
I don't know.
Manufacturing of the THC product?
See, to me, growing and manufacturing are different. But maybe I'm, is that, I mean, I've read things that there's, people are looking at it three ways.
But there's growing and then there's making the.
Extracting it.
Right, extract, yeah.
But then there's something like, oh, I'm gonna use the THC product as an ingredient in.
My chocolate.
Exactly. So, where do you, how do you define manufacturing at that point? Is it the end product or is it just the ingredient?
And maybe manufacturing follows retail and it's the growing that has to be further. Because like you said, like manufacturing is, how do you define that? Like, just because they're making chocolate that has this in, you know, one out of 15 bars they sell, should they have to jump through the hoops? I, I guess I'd be fine with the manufacturing piece being differentiated from the growing and matching to retail, personally.
Yeah, and I guess we'd, we'd defer to whatever regulations are out there that govern that.
Yeah. Yeah, any regulations that are already out there would trump anything that we're doing here anyway.
Right. Because they'd have to follow pharmacy, I think, no matter what. And I think explaining to the council, if you're gonna do a memo, that like our concern with defining manufacturing that you raised is, like dumping it in a mixing bowl is kind of different than growing it in, you know, growers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't disagree, yeah, I mean.
I just feel like we're the, I, at least I feel like the wrong bunch to be making recommendations on some of this.
Well, there's just, there are a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts with this that I think are not fully realized yet. I mean, the, the actual like distilling down of the hemp product to get to the CBD, THC, what have you, is probably different than the process that is used to put it into the product that is then sold and, yeah. And are those things happening in the same location? Probably sometimes, but probably not always.
Is the county looking at this at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
See, that's the other reality, is, is what's gonna happen is they're just gonna go right outside the city limits and do whatever they want if we don't make it open enough here.
So is it ultimately that much different than, just say, some of our breweries in town?
No, that can be anywhere. I mean, within reason, basically.
Okay, so, I mean, it's the same process. They take an egg product, go through a bunch of distilling and end up with an end result that is mind altering.
So are the breweries restricted to where they can be?
Business zones.
Right.
But like Fergus brewery is right next to residential, there's no buffer.
No. And did that, did you have to get a conditional use anything? I just, I'm all for business, I guess, so.
Well, and, and it's almost, what's the problem that we're contending with? I don't, and maybe, maybe if a bunch of people start, you know, mixing this or quote unquote manufacturing or whatever, we'll become alerted to a problem that that causes a side effect to actually be addressed, but maybe, maybe treat that one like alcohol then, in the meantime, I don't know.
I mean, and I think, I get what Stillwater's trying to do. They are a tourist venue location, I mean, their whole downtown is, they do not want CBD every other store. That's from what I've read about Stillwater, that's what they're trying to avoid. Is that right?
It, partly, but also they started this process with an eye to marijuana being legal in the state of Minnesota. So this is what they see as a step down that path. So they were ready to take this step already because they've seen this coming somehow before any of the rest of us caught on. So, their, no, their end goal is that they want to be prepared for when marijuana is legal.
And at some point, when marijuana is legal, we're just gonna have to accept to some extent, it's legal.
I, and when, when we're having this discussion, I'm imagining in my head that marijuana's legal tomorrow and that we're designing, you know, so people aren't, there's no concern about a moratorium, people aren't up in the air and, you know, so, I don't know.
I mean, and I, I personally wouldn't be opposed to marijuana being available in these districts, I guess.
Well, and something you said too, Laurel, which is, what's the difference between, you know, alcohol and what we're talking about with THC and why the regulations on this versus alcohol, why are we going through all this? And none of us want to impede any business. I mean, I think that's where we're at, but same time, we want to protect our citizens. I mean, that's where we're all at.
To me, it's really coming down to, we have, I mean, we can match it in our zoning in a way that makes sense. We can put it into the business zones, we can, we can tell people where they can safely manufacture whatever, but to me, it's coming down to, there needs to be a separate licensing process because we, we see this as some sort of an intoxicating.
The THC and above?
Yep. It, right now, it's listed as not intoxicating, but eventually, if this does become, if marijuana, the definition of marijuana becomes legal, then it will be seen as an intoxicating substance. And are we preparing ourselves for that? I think we can argue that is what we're trying.
And we really rude and walked that way because I let my husband into my car. Sorry.
The more I hear about this, the more I'm almost inclined to just say, just keep it our residential on all accounts. And then it, it just kind of covers everything.
Yeah.
What if you had a village baking license though? And I'd go down to the farmer's market and sell my THC infused muffins.
I think that would come down to them, the state saying, no, you can't do that with your cottage industry license.
Okay, but then could we just add a conditional use permit in residential and make sure that they have a, whatever they call it, is it a village baking license?
Cottage.
Cottage.
Cottage food license, yes. But even some cottage food license, you don't even need a cottage food license for certain things. I mean, like there's ways to stay under that too. I mean, I'm just, well, I mean.
There's people out there selling it right now.
Oh, I know they're not. Oh, yeah. Right, exactly.
They're all licensed.
And they're all licensed.
You gotta be realistic, you're not gonna catch everything.
There's people out there selling the real stuff too. The reality is, is it's gonna become a part of everyday life for most people at some point.
Well, because we can't police all behaviors, the zoning code in this area is really just an expression of the city's preference.
Exactly.
Uh, and so we would prefer that you not do it in residential and you can do it anywhere else and you get licensed and maybe it's a license that's parallel to the nicotine. I could see how maybe it can't be the exact same thing, even though the requirements might be exactly the same, but that's, that's, that's where I would take it.
And I guess, and maybe can we say residential if under a cottage food license? Because then they've gone through a process. You know what I mean? Like that.
Well, then they'd be going for home occupation and we have an avenue for that already, so.
But it doesn't have to be permit, that you don't have to permit a home occupation, do you?
Only if it's a specific thing, so we could add it to the list of items that has to be permitted as a home occupation.
That maybe wouldn't solve anything though, because I mean, it's just gonna happen. And maybe you just turn a blind eye to the residential stuff.
Or maybe we just say, don't open a retail store in a residential zone trying to sell this stuff and leave it at that.
And, and, isn't there some, sorry, isn't there some other regulation that's gonna apply here to, to businesses that are trying to sell homegrown unlicensed stuff? And so I, you know, you just, the consumer can decide if they want to go to Bill's Garage to buy this stuff or do a licensed business.
And I think the trick is gonna be though, if the city gets a complaint about someone going to Bill's Garage, if we don't call out right, wrong, or otherwise, it's probably gonna come down as wrong. Is that right? I mean, if someone calls April and says, this stuff's leaving my garage seven times a day, or, you know, my neighbor's garage, you know, that kind of a situation.
Yeah, and at that point, what the city would say is you're no longer a home occupation, you have too much traffic going to your business that you're running from your home, now you must locate in a business zone.
But it'll also probably say, it says only business and commercial districts, so it's not allowed. You know what I mean? Like they'll come down and say it's not allowed in residential.
Right, which is why we'd have to have an avenue for it as a home occupation.
Right. So I think we have to list it as conditional use permit for home occupation.
So what about the city's farmer's market on city property?
I think it's gotta be allowed, doesn't it? It's a legal substance. I mean, legally they can sell it.
But not federally.
Federally, the THC isn't allowed? Okay, so you can still get in trouble for buying.
What I said earlier though, I mean, uh, you know, edible, I don't know, I don't know all the terminology, but edibles that can get a person high can be federally legally sold under the farm bill. So where those are manufactured, where those are sold, I, you know, no clue, but again, maybe the city council can, maybe that could be an issue they deal with. I, I don't know.
So federally, they are okay?
Under the 2018, I think it was, the non, it's not THC though, it's like Delta 9 or whatever the, I don't, whatever, whatever it is, can get a person high and can be sold. That's, so.
And those were illegal in Minnesota until this.
This bill, yes.
Delta 9, et cetera.
They were, well, Delta 8 then? I don't, they were sold at, here in town, prior to this. So maybe illegal, maybe not, but.
Well, pharmacy says, nope, that was not ever allowed. It was happening all over the place, unregulated.
But now it is legal.
But now Delta 9, Delta 10 are specifically called out in this legislation as allowable. I don't know what that means for the other variations, however.
I thought 8 and down was legal to start with, but I'm, maybe I'm crazy.
I don't know.
I never used this stuff either, so I imagine, like, no point of reference.
Well, now I'm worried that Delta, that when we talk about something like Delta 8 or Delta 9, that's still considered THC, right? Or is that?
No, that's not THC, that's just CBD, a stronger version of CBD is my understanding. So I think that is below what we're talking about.
Yeah, I was envisioning a reaction to what just happened.
Yes.
And that, and that's, that's it. What, what's our farmer's market zoned? Is that?
It's right there, just happens right there.
I assume it's 3.
E3, I think.
Yeah, so if it's city owned property, I, I'd just say to the council, they can make the call on that. I don't know. It's the same, same as if someone wanted to sell martinis there or something, I don't know.
Which you can do. You have to just get an alcohol license, but yeah, you could sell martinis at the farmer's market.
See, to me, I would allow it down there.
But not in a glass cup.
It's probably the fastest way to grow the farmer's market. I mean, not that it's hurting, but it probably would hurt. I don't know. I'm kind of of the mindset of the more the merrier in regards to business.
If, if it's too open and there's problems, the council can revisit it. If it's too closed, we're preventing things from happening that could happen and might be okay. I, that's what I think.
And I just, you don't hear about like, oh, this town has had a huge issue with CBD so. And I just, you don't hear about, like, oh, this town has had a huge issue with CBD sellers. I mean, like, you're just not hearing it in the news. And if we can increase our tax rate, bring it on.
And maybe we would be a destination for Fargo people to come, or something.
Maybe.
No.
Yeah, we are less restricted.
You can have it in a cart by the water park, I don't know.
Sure.
Let's not share that with anyone. That's right.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, then, is I'm going to draft some language that pairs THC with nicotine in our zoning code.
But only to resident, but all resident, or, uh, only excluding residential?
Residential, no schools.
Not within however many feet of the schools.
X number of feet. Production in industrial zones
Yeah.
plus allowable through CUP in other business districts.
Is it production, or is it growing? To me, it's growing. Is that where we landed, was growing? Cause production was the one we couldn't really define.
I think the manufacturing needs to be in the industrial, and then with the business zones or the conditional use, I think the production, which would be the growing of it, can stay in agriculture.
Do we even have any ag? We have very little, and we have houses in ag still.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some bits and pieces that, well, they're larger chunks, but we do have some RA still. So ag production
And maybe you can include industrial in that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, indoor grow, indoor grow and, and industrial.
Would there need to be, be any major risk in, in keeping that last part, and just saying, just keep it out of everything, or just keeping it out of residential only? Again, just in that last part? I mean, so you could do resident, or you could do it in commercial, industrial?
The manufacturing?
In manufacturing.
I wouldn't oppose that manufacturing, the growing, I would rather commercial or ag.
Yeah.
Do you put a certain amount, so you can still have the home enthusiasts, if you will? No different than, I do home brewing beer.
Yeah. Okay, so let's just, like, play, this is how naive I am. Okay, say someone raids, like, the cops come and raid your house because of some other reason, and they find three plants. Do you get arrested for those three plants right now, or are you a home enthusiast?
Did they decriminalize?
That's what I'm asking, like, where are we at with that?
Minnesota, I'm pretty sure they decriminalized.
I cannot effectively answer that question.
Like, it's a misdemeanor.
So they just, like, wave at you or ask to share, or something? I, I mean, like
I'm pretty sure it was just under a certain amount, it's just a misdemeanor, no, no different than a
So then, do we say
What, what, what we'd be dealing with there is commercial growing, really. I mean, that's the thing that might affect your neighbors, or, you know?
Right.
No commercial growing in a residential? Can we call that out?
Cause I think, too, about, okay, and I, I think about, like, the bread company here. I mean, just, as a, for instance, if they went under for bread making, and then all of a sudden, they decided to manufacture marijuana, right? All of a sudden, you know, I mean, people in the neighborhood might, I mean, you got the jail right next door, they may like that smell. I mean, as an example. I mean, you, you get some, you get some, you know, a manufacturing like that, you don't wanna inhibit, you know, someone, uh, an industry like that. I'm just saying, you know?
I mean, to me, the manufacturing could be conditional use permit in anything that's not a commercial zone?
Or industrial?
Or industrial, yeah, I can't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that'd be fine with me, I
I'm just thinking of random thoughts.
Right. Did you do it as a conditional use permit in anything non-industrial? That is, that is a commercial level grow? You know what I mean? Like, and no commercial growing in residential areas?
Thank you for putting my thoughts together.
Is that what you're kind of getting to?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause then the home, the home grower is fine.
Yeah, we're not inadvertently stepping on some right that might exist in the future, then, too, so
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Have we lost you?
I'm gonna, we're gonna check.
I hate some of this stuff.
THC and nicotine together, no residential, not within X number of feet from a school, um
No, no commercial residential. Do you know what I mean? Like
This is retail she's talking.
Right, so
Yeah.
Oh, just retail, okay, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, yep, also retail only. Then when we get into the commercial production, that is ag or industrial, manufacturing allowed in
Everything but residential.
Anything but residential.
And residential with a CUP.
And residential with CUP.
We need to have a lot of the
And I think putting the example in the, in the memo of the residential with CUP of the cottage food industry. You know what I mean? Referring to that as a concern we need to address.
Are we thinking CUP, or are we thinking home occupation permit?
Whichever would be better, I guess, either.
I'll work through that, maybe with Rolf. Okay. Overall, though, manufacturing is staying with retail, so that would be allowed pretty much anywhere. Um, and then I have CUP in anything not industrial.
I think we, that was only for the growing piece.
Okay. Okay.
I think we need to make sure that they know what we're defining as the growing piece. You know what I mean? Like, the tier 3 is the growing.
Okay.
Uh, one note that I had, I, so you said in the beginning, um, same as nicotine, but then everything we say after that is different from nicotine, so we might just say a licensing requirement similar to nicotine is what we envisioned, but it's up to them on how to treat that.
Not the other nicotine requirements necessarily.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think I can work with this, I think next month, I can bring back, bring back some draft language.
Do we need to move quicker than that, so the council can enact? I mean, like, is Andrew concerned we need to move faster than that?
I mean, the reality of something popping up randomly at this point, like, if they didn't do it right away, waiting for this legislation to pass
It should be okay.
I think it's fine, but we could do, I mean, if you wanna do a subcommittee, that
No, cause I mean, I don't think subcommittees can technically forward it on, without us forwarding it.
No, but you could meet and go over the language, and then recommend to the next planning commission meeting, and then kick it to council.
I think if this was a burning issue, there'd be bodies here.
Right, and there's
Good point.
So I think, but hopefully, the next meeting, we can kick it to council, no matter what.
Okay. Yeah.
Is it possible to send this out? It's not, sometimes I feel, I mean, I think everyone here is pretty good readers of the packet, but sometimes I feel like the packets get kind of read the day of. Maybe this could go out a little sooner?
Yes, I could do, so we have several members who are not here tonight, obviously. What I could do is just an update email that says, this is what we discussed for this, you know, CBD part of the discussion, and then if anyone has comments, they can send them back to me individually, and I can incorporate those.
Right, and if you wanna include some background on where the discussion, kind of, how we landed there?
So we don't have to rehash
Uh-huh, all of this, that's kind of what I'm thinking, is we're gonna have 45 minutes into this again, when we have, you know, former people here.
Yeah, I think we're done.
Yeah. I mean, like, I, I would be fine with you just putting language together and it going to council, personally, but I don't know if we can do that.
I would want you to look at it again.
Okay.
And make sure that we're doing it the way that we've envisioned, but we're also missing at least two other attorneys who probably will have a lot to say on this, so This is stacked forward.
Staff update? What are we doing with the staff? Are you our staff person de jour, or what, what's the plan?
Um, nothing is official yet, but we do have a solution to some of the more analytical sides of the planning, so somebody who can be helping with people who come in and wanna talk about, how do I build my garage, and how large can it be on the property I own? Um, so I will probably remain your main staff member for the meetings, for things like ordinance updates, et cetera. But yes, we will be making some shifts.
Okay. So is it sounding like, and maybe you can't say this, the person that's gonna be answering the what we can do person, is that our zone enforcement person?
Um, the title would be Planning Specialist.
Right, but is it someone that's currently dealing with, like, zone enforcement, or no? Or you can't say yes?
I can't.
Okay.
Nothing's
Okay. Perfect.
Sorry, that is a maddening response.
No, that's fine, I just, we've kind of gone down that path before, and it was
Okay.
Hard.
I do not think it's the same path
Okay.
that has been gone down before.
Okay, that was just my concern, is that we ended up with very angry people at meetings.
We will do our best to avoid that.
And it's nothing against anyone, it's just, like, that kind of happened.
Yep, yep. No, it'll, it, it's a different solution.
If Jill doesn't have to include that, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yeah, that's
It's just honest. Anything else?
No, thank you, guys, this is good, really good discussion.
Thank you for your research, it was helpful.